Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for February 5th, 2018, to order. Recognize that we have a total of seven items on tonight's agenda. Beginning with the Pledge of Allegiance, please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, in the resolve with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of January 22nd, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Under item, agenda items for consideration is item number two, temporary Class B beer license for the Washington County Historical Society Incorporated for courtroom mystery dinner being held at the Washington County Historical Society Incorporated, second floor, 320 South Fifth Avenue, from 2:00 p.m. through 10:00 p.m. Saturday, February 17th.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number three is a temporary Class B beer/wine license for the West Bend Athletic Booster Club for Chasin' the Chili, Chasin' the Chill, excuse me, being held at Lachlan in the Morin, Morin Building, February 10th, 2018, from 11:00 a.m. through 11:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item four is a temporary Class B beer license for St. Francis Cabrini Parish for SFC Trivia Night, being held on April 13th, 2018, at 10:25 South Seventh Avenue, Mother Cabrini Hall, 6:00 p.m. through 10:30 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Item number five is a temporary Class B beer and wine license for the Casa Guadalupe Education Center for the Sixth Annual Fiesta Latina, being held on May 20th, 2018, in the Regner Park Entertainment Area, from 8:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. And item number six is approval of the operator's license from the list attached.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. Being no further business before the licensing board, adjourn.
Thanks, Craig. I'd like to call the February 5th Board of Public Works to order. We have nine items on the agenda. Item number one is approval of the minutes from December 18th, 2017.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion in second. Any comments or questions? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number two, renewal of water tower cellular lease agreement with AT&amp;T. The presentation by Travis Gold. Man, you're a...
Good evening. The current lease agreement with AT&amp;T that was signed in 1999 is set to expire March of 2019. And all the renewal periods will be exhausted then. The new lease amendment proposes that upon expiration of the current term, the lease will automatically renew for three separate consecutive five-year periods. The annual rent will increase from approximately $21,500 to $35,000 a year with the annual escalator of 3% per year for the remainder of the lease. All the other terms and conditions of this current lease shall remain in full force and effect. We are recommending approval of this lease amendment. Any questions?
I don't think so. Travis, it's pretty standard terms amongst all the different municipalities. I'm assuming there's not a whole lot of difference between lease rates on some of these.
Yeah, actually, it's not much. We're actually really comparable to a lot of size cities that we're in.
Excellent.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion in second. Any comments or questions? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Thanks, Travis. Item number three, real estate transfer agreement between the City of West Bend and the Museum of Wisconsin Art Incorporated. Jay, are you handling this one, or is the Moa transfer?
I can, Ian can, and Mark can probably jump in as well. I'll just introduce the topic. We did talk with Lori Winters about whether or not she needed to be here tonight. She was here at the last meeting, and then with the snow, I assured her that we were probably okay. If we need her in the future, we can always get her back. But this is related to the cultural campus proposal that Moa is pursuing at this time for their green space, as you know, south of the property. As part of that discussion, they were hoping to do some things different alignment-wise with our parking lot that the city currently owns, and that led to a conversation about the city turning or transferring over that parking lot to Moa's ownership as long as there were some public parking parameters left in place. And maybe leaving Ian to speak to the negotiations that took place between himself and the attorney for Moa.
So if you look at the real estate transfer agreement, there's several moving parts here. Obviously, we're transferring the parking lot ownership to Moa so that they're taking over maintenance and general upkeep of the parking lot. There's a couple of things that we wanted to maintain. We wanted to maintain public parking. That easement's going to be very similar to what was in place previously. The only real difference is since Moa owns the lot, they won't have to give us written notice or ask our permission to close the lot. They'll just have to tell us that they're going to close it, and we can then post it if need be. We are maintaining the walkway easement, which is for the, currently the ADA compliant ramp from, that goes down the parking lot onto the sidewalk along Veterans. They do intend to realign that as their proposal moves forward. They would have to bring that to Plan Commission and get approval from us to realign where that is. We're transferring some of the storm sewer laterals. We're maintaining our storm sewer main. And then we are terminating the landscape and maintenance easement, which addressed some property that was part of the parking parcel that Moa was going to landscape. So basically, we're maintaining public parking. We're maintaining our ADA compliant access from the Eisenbahnen to the bridge, and they're taking over the rest of the property there.
Thanks, Ian. Yes, John?
Just a question. You said maintenance during the winter months, are they going to, is the city going to have to be responsible for Paulings North? Moa will be totally responsible for that as well?
They're taking over all of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Craig?
I think that also this includes the dumpster corral also that we maintain, I believe.
Correct.
So we've been repairing the doors on it and horsing around with it. That's all gone too, as well.
Yep.
Excellent. Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on the transfer agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion in second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, Contract 18-01, Eighth Avenue Reconstruction Phase One, Chestnut Street to Walnut Street, Award of Contract. Presentation by City Engineer Max Marshall. Good evening, Max.
Good evening. Thank you. The city is going to reconstruct Eighth Avenue in two phases. One phase this year between Chestnut Street and Walnut Street, and the second phase is planned for next year between Chestnut, between Walnut Street and Washington Street. So this is for the contract to build Phase One between Chestnut and Walnut Street. We receive the bids on January 25th. We receive eight bids, and the low bidder is Dornar Inc. from Luxembourg, Wisconsin. Specific work on this contract will include replacing the water main about 1,200 feet. We have cast iron water main that we're replacing with PVC, eight-inch PVC, and then replacement of sanitary sewer as well, and reconstruction of storm sewer, road base, road pavement, curb and gutter, sidewalk, et cetera. So we reviewed all the bids, and we reviewed the qualifications of Dornar, the low bidder, and based on work previously done in the city, we think that Dornar is capable of doing the work under this contract. Therefore, we're recommending award of the contract to Dornar for the price of their bid, which is $671,293.30, as well as allocating a contingency fund for a total allocation not to exceed $707,000 for the construction of this project. If the board acts positively with this recommendation, we have an award of contract attached.
Thanks, Max. Definitely some exciting news there for that street. I know it's a big project that's up ahead of us, so...
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion in second. Any comments or questions for Max on this? Yes, John?
Just have one. Max, you said that they have done some projects in the city before. Do you have any idea what areas they've done before?
They've done the sanitary sewer line that we did in Salisbury Road, and they also did work, I believe, on Sylvan Way.
Okay. All right. I'm very familiar with the one up on Salisbury Road, and we've had no problems. Okay, I have no problem with that. I was a little concerned because of the, the pre-bid estimate was 926,000, and here they come in with a beta of 671. That is a huge difference, but again, it's exciting. It's good, it's good news and up-hat news, so, thanks, Max.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, Craig?
Real quickly, I shared John's concern initially until you take a look, and I think it's six out of seven, or seven out of the eight bids actually came in under the pre-bid estimate. So hopefully that's, knock on wood, hopefully that's good things with prevailing wage law change and allowing more folks to get bids. It's also good to see that many interested bidders.
Absolutely. If not, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number five is to the permission to advertise Contract 18-03, Rolfs Avenue Extension for Bids. Again, Max Marshall.
Thank you again. This contract is for the extension of Rolfs Avenue, which currently ends just north of Lang Street. The City of West Bend and Washington County entered into an agreement in 2015, and part of this agreement, one of the, the part of this agreement is that the city would extend Rolfs Avenue north to the intersection of Creek and Schmidt Road, and then vacate Schmidt Road between that intersection and Washington Street. So the project consists of building the road extension with our standard full urban section along with the necessary storm structures and facilities. We'll put sidewalk on one side of the street, on the east side of Rolfs Avenue, and also we'll just leave an opening at Schmidt Road for the county access to their facilities We'll also improve the intersection of Rolfs Avenue and Washington Street in order to create the same configuration that we currently have at Schmidt Road to accommodate the right turn movement. So when this contract, when, when the agreement was made with the county, we had a cost estimate of $470,000, but that cost estimate was established for a road with a urban cross-section, I mean with a rural cross-section, I'm sorry. We developed the plans and the design with a urban cross-section, and our updated cost estimate was $800,000. However, we had built our budget with the previous cost estimate, and we will ask the Finance Committee for authorization to modify some funding in order to be able to fund this project based on the cost estimate that we have. So at this time, we'll ask you for permission to advertise the contract, probably contingent to the Finance Committee decision on the funding.
Excellent. Thanks, Max. And I want to remind the council that this is part of that agreement that we did for taking over River Road by the high school there for the sidewalk, taking over Ridge Run Park, vacating Schmidt, and then doing this road. Yes, Chris?
Just have a question for you, Max. So you talked about the rural cross-section versus the urban. Can you talk about the advantages of doing the urban versus rural? Because, I mean, obviously Schmidt Road's doing okay the way it is now.
Yes. Basically, the first thing is that we have an urban cross-section on Rolfs Avenue from Washington to the current terminus just north of Lang Street. So we want to continue this cross-section. The reason why we go with the urban cross-section throughout the city, the main reason is because of maintenance. We put those curb and gutter, and we put a storm sewer in place, and that's what we deal with in 99% of the city. And it's, it's less taxing on our Department of Public Works for the maintenance of the shoulders and the grass in the ditches, et cetera. All the equipment that they have is adapted to the maintenance of urban cross-section. So we're looking at it with the idea that we invest in the urban cross-section today and save on the maintenance in the future.
Thank you.
Yes, John?
Max, can you refresh my memory? The reason Rolfs Road is curved to go off onto Schmidt versus going straight to Creek Drive, was that the county's request that we do a curve and come out on Schmidt Road versus going straight into Creek?
No. That is, that is an option that we developed. We looked at the various options with the T intersection with bringing Rolfs Avenue straight to Creek Road there. We looked at this option that we're proposing, and based on what we've seen with the various options, we think that this is the best one. We know that there's truck movements on this road. We talked to the businesses north of this area that currently use Schmidt Road, and based on our discussions with them, we believe this would be the best, the best version to take for vehicle fluidity through the area.
Okay. I just want to compliment Max on going to urban versus rural. I know, working with Public Works, very familiar with shoulders of roads high wild wood, Sylvan Way, where we don't have curb and gutter. You have to go out there every, every year, and we have to put shoulders down, or they have to put gravel down to re-shoulder the roads. When you have curb and gutter, you don't have to worry about it, and it is, like you said, it puts a lot of work and effort on the Public Works for doing that. I think great job in going with their urban.
Yes, Craig?
Max, I assume the sidewalk will then connect, it'll cross Creek Road and connect to the sidewalk that is on the north side of Creek? I don't think there's sidewalk on both sides along Creek.
No, there is, there is sidewalk on the north side of Creek Road, so there will be a ramp there, and then there will be a ramp on the south side so that people will be able to cross Creek Road and use this sidewalk coming down. We did have, over the years, many requests for us to put sidewalk alongside Schmidt Road from the residents north of Creek Road, and that is why now that we have this opportunity to make this connection, we would like to do that.
I think that makes sense.
Any other comments? If not, I will entertain a motion for this item.
Motion approved.
Second. I have a motion in second. Any other comments or questions? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. And that motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
Hopefully we are. Bids come in as favorable as they did for Eighth Avenue. Item number six, Preliminary Resolution to Vacate All of Franklin Street and a portion of Main Street north of West Washington Street by the Development Department, City of West Bend. Presentation by Mark Petrovic. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening. The resolution before you tonight is an introductory resolution. It starts the process for a vacation of two sections of street. One of those is Franklin Street. It's supposed to be, or proposed to be vacated in its entirety. It's a one-block section, basically between Main and the river, just south of the old brewery building. The other portion is a small portion of the Main Street right-of-way. It's currently being used for a public parking lot. The idea of this is to vacate the two portions to facilitate the development of the lands to the east of this. It was done at the request of the proposed, or the developer of that proposed site. The concept for this was discussed at the Plan Commission and was endorsed by the Plan Commission. However, we have to go through the full process here. Essentially, when you, if and when you decide to vacate the Franklin Street, that right-of-way immediately goes back to the ownership. It splits evenly between the properties on either side of it, whereas the Main Street portion, because of where it came from, basically the city would retain it, and it would be available for transfer and ownership in a developer's agreement with the developer. Basically, the Plan Commission and staff's review of this indicated that there was no need for the public road purpose for Franklin Street anymore. We'd rather see it part of the development. It's the ownership of both pieces on either side of Franklin Street are in common ownership now and would be under, after the development as well. So it really goes to serve a private piece of property. The utilities that exist within both public and private would retain easements automatically within that land, so we would, do not have any relocation costs, and the development that's being proposed wouldn't interfere with those utilities. The Main Street portion, again, it's an underutilized parking lot, city parking lot. We essentially do not even maintain that in the winter. We do not issue parking permits for it anymore. So we'd rather see that go over to development if at all possible. I should point out that the right-of-way for, within that small portion of Main Street was part of some lands that were identified back in the 2005 concept plan for the reconstruction of this intersection as a two-lane roundabout. Pardon me. That concept was put forward by the, what was then the Downtown West Bend Association proposal. They requested the council endorse that concept, which you did by resolution back then. However, the, that was forwarded to the DOT. The conceptual roundabout design was given to the DOT, and that concept never progressed beyond that point. As to why, it's conjecture at this point, but it didn't move forward, most likely due to the costs of the redevelopment and the timing concerns for that. So even if you start the vacation process here, essentially what this resolution does is sets up the public hearing for the 19th of this March. It's out that far because of public notice requirements, and it would also refer to the Plan Commission for action, formal action tomorrow night at the Plan Commission. We'd ask that you approve the resolution, please.
Thanks, Mark. Out of all the conversations I've had, people didn't even know Franklin Street was really a street. They thought it was more of a driveway, so I don't think there would be a whole lot of concern about that.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Item number seven, Permission to Award Contract 17-10, East Side Riverside, I'm sorry, East Side Riverwalk Project. The presentation by Cindy. Good evening, Cindy.
Craig brought this to this council back in June, I believe it was, June or July, to talk about permission to bid, and it was finally bid out in December. We got bids back in January, got four bids, and the low bid was Yankee General Contractors. They've been experienced in this type of work. They've done work for the county that I'm familiar with, and they put in the north bridge for the city. They also have a subcontractor that they supplied references for that I checked out, and they were satisfactory. So we believe they're qualified to do the work. You've all heard the whole spiel about what the Riverwalk project's about, so I won't go over that, but we did include an alternate bid for removal of those abutments from the overhead bridge with this project. That was $11,000. Some of the demolition, the planting, will be done by city staff, electrical, parks, forestry, and the bid plus, the Yankees' bid plus the alternate bid comes to a total of $1,077,753. We've got a contingency fund of 17% included that we want to have for $183,000, $181,348 to cover unknowns. We're not sure if we're going to have any contaminated soil or water during construction, so we need money to cover that, any anomalies you uncover with the riverbank doing construction. So we've got a 17% contingency to include in there. We're also, we also requested some pricing for owner-direct purchases from the contractor. I'm going to go through that in a second, but that'll allow us to save some tax money on those owner-direct purchases. We've talked all along about this being a $2 million project, so it looks like this is a really low price for this. But if you look at the attachments that we've got with this project, there's one called Riverwalk Expenses. I just want to go through that so you understand all the other things that aren't in the bid that are part of this project. At the very top of that is the base bid, the 17% contingencies right underneath that, and then $11,000 alternate bid. So if you add in the estimated owner-direct purchases, we're up to $1.46 million. Below that, there's other expenses. Some of these we've already incurred, some of them we're going to be incurring before the project gets going, and some of them will be happening during the project. So some of these are just estimates. So we've got We Energies, we relocated that pole at the south end of the project area. We're putting in two new services, one on the north, one on the south end, and then there's going to be materials that are purchased with the electrical staff from the city to put, to build those services and put them on either end. We have some utilities from AT&amp;T to relocate. The south pedestrian bridge, we have to purchase the bridge yet, and we paid for the engineering out of this $2 million estimate. We're going to be having to stain that ready rock wall, so that's another item we have to bid out and put a request for proposals together with. The wing wall around those abutments that are coming down is in bad shape. It's cracked. There's some pieces missing at the bottom. So I got a quote from a contractor to spray gunite on there, which will strengthen it and fill up the cracks and improve the aesthetics on that big time. Engineering and design from MSA, that's a known cost. We've already paid for that. There were some things completed in 2014. Those are included in this estimate. The tree and shrub planting and all of the site amenities, we've got estimates for. We're going to have Kunkel Engineering do the survey staking, the ASB builds, the construction administration and inspection. We've got a price from them for that. There's a letter of map revision that's required by the DNR permit and FEMA. There's a cost for the permit itself, which is $8,000, and then engineering to submit all of that, make sure everything's complete. So I have a number from Kunkel to do that. And at the very bottom, we've got an estimate from We Energies to convert the existing streetlights on Veterans and in Moa's parking lot and that whole project area to LEDs. We could or could not do this. It depends on what this council wants to do. But there's a price in there for that, to convert them to LEDs, and I talked to the rep from We Energies. He said we could recoup that cost in five and a half years if we do that. So that brings us to $1.976,547.80. So that's closer to the $2 million estimate that we've been talking about all along. Craig, do you want to come up and talk about the revenues that we've got for the project already? already?
I'm always happy to bring good news. So Cindy did an awesome job to get us below $2 million for everything included, which we're excited about. And you'll see, coming up in Finance Committee, we have a couple donations coming in, but from city funds, from all the DNR grants, the two different grants we've received, and a number of charitable foundations and businesses in the city, right now we're committed for $2,430,000. So about $60,000 more than we have estimated for our project, which is very positive. There's news of more money coming in, I think, in the future. The idea is if we do have some leftover money, then this would go towards the west side, where we can start design work right away in any kind of soil borings or whatever we have to do. So very positive as of right now. We're in great shape with revenue and expenses. Anything other good news you want me to share?
Just asking for approval to award this project to Yankee General Contractors.
Thanks, Cindy. Thanks, Craig. Any comments or questions for the, yes, Craig?
Got a couple of comments, assuming the council approves the bids. And starting off by saying it's a pretty big day. I know that this has been, we've been dealing with this for a handful of years, although not as directly as you guys have on a daily basis. Big day for downtown, a big day for West Bend as a whole. Pretty creative project. It's pretty unusual for a public works project to have so much public investment. If you take a scan through the revenues list, it's, over half a million dollars has come directly from local foundations, families, individuals, organizations for this public works project. And it just goes to show that if it's important enough of a project, West Bend will step up to get this handled. It's great to see us getting creative, saving some sales tax and doing some direct purchasing. That's a great creative way that staff came up to save a few dollars, as well as city staff doing some of the work that we're qualified and capable of doing. So it, again, I guess I'd just like to thank staff. Thanks for the council, for the patience, and thanks to the community for allowing us to continue to improve our downtown the way we have. Looking forward to a grand opening in fall of '18. We've got to avoid some spawning fish, so I don't think we can start until June 1st while the fish do their thing. But after that, we'll be ready to roll. Good work, everybody.
And I echo that. If you look at the Riverwalk revenues here, there's, are some very nice contributions made by some private, you know, companies and individuals and families. So it's very nice to see that, that support for this project, so. Any other comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Thanks, Cindy. Item number eight, Permission to Award RFP seventeen dash zero six Milwaukee River South Pedestrian Bridge Purchase. Again, Cindy.
Thank you. So we came back to you in summer, in June, to request permission to award this south pedestrian bridge engineering and purchase. And because we weren't sure of the funding at that time, this council wanted to wait to award the actual fabrication and delivery of the bridge itself. We needed the design done because we needed that permitting. So today I'm coming back to you to ask for permission to award the actual bridge itself. Just to refresh, two bids were received back then, one from Anderson for $81,500, and Wheeler Lumber was $64,750. We have the remainder of the bridge to purchase. It's, the total for that part of it was $48,560. So the revenues that we have, and this is part of the entire Riverwalk project, the cost for that, so the revenues that we have cover the south pedestrian bridge. So we're requesting the award to be made to Wheeler Lumber for this.
Excellent. Thanks, Cindy. Any comments or questions on this one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. If there are no further comments or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Thank you, Cindy. And finally, item number nine, Permission to Bid Contract Eighteen dash zero five Tree Surety for 2018.
Thank you. Okay, one more thing here. As in other years, we're, we were requesting to bid out the planting of street trees for this spring. We're requesting 293 trees be planted this spring. We have a lot of requests that were put aside for next year because some of the stumps in the trees are still there, but this is what we have available spaces for now. Just to summarize that, we've got 48 trees proposed to be put in subdivisions, 181 trees would be part of the Free Street Tree EAB Response Plan. And because we got a $28,000 award, grant award from the Urban Forestry Program, we wanted to make sure we had enough trees to match the $25,000 that we got from that grant. So the guys went out and checked, there was streets that had been reconstructed, that they took trees down that were never replaced. So we're going to add 44 trees for those streets that were reconstructed, that we can replant those trees. And then there's 20 trees that we're going to be putting into parks where they took ash trees down that were infected with EAB. As other, as last year, we pre-purchased trees from Johnson's Nursery, 150 of those trees, on a contract grow program. And because we're adding a lot more trees this year, we bought another 40 trees for this program. The other 103 trees have to be purchased by the contractor for installation. Again, this is a, for planting, it's for 12 weeks of watering in the base bid, and then we have another option of awarding 14 more weeks of watering, depending upon the weather. Last year, we didn't have to award any of that because we had plenty of rain. So the preliminary estimate for this is $76,000. Some of that will come from the Tree Surety Program, $13,288 estimated. There is a $25,000 grant, and then the other $37,000, estimated $712 would come from capital funding for this program. So, any questions?
Thanks, Cindy. This is pretty much the same process we go through every year.
Right.
Thanks.
What's that?
I'm sorry. We got a $25,000 grant. That's the, that's the big positive out of it.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions or celebrations about the grant? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Being no further business for the Board of Public Works, I adjourn. And then I will call to order the Finance Committee for February 5th of 2018 to order. Again, we have nine items on the agenda. Item number one is the approved amendments of December 18th, 2017.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Item number two, Transfer of Funds for the New City Hall Cooling System. Jay, are you?
I'll introduce and then have Todd Meeks explain in more detail. As you know, the heating and cooling system, both in this building are getting up there. They've been on our CIP list for some time and under discussion much longer than I've been here. We did fund and budget for the boiler replacement in 2017, and also rolled some additional monies into that fund in early 2017 with some exploration. We realized that there were not likely enough monies in there, so we did roll an extra $29,000 into that fund to complete the work in 2019. We had, we had some turnover in staff and some higher original estimates than what we originally were thinking for the boiler system, so we did not complete the project in 2017. And that was good news because near the end of the cooling system season of 2013, the cooling system went down, and I'll let Todd take it away from there.
Right. Good evening. So like Jay said, that the cooling tower did go down at the end of last season. It has passed its lifespan and beyond repair. So what we want to do now is we want to take and upgrade to a new condensing unit on the roof, get rid of the cooling tower, put a new DX coil inside, which, doing that, will get rid of softening the water to the cooling tower. It'll get rid of using the water to the cooling tower, all the pumps, chemicals, seasonal shutdown, and all of our R22 refrigerant used for that. The new condensing unit will use refrigerant lines, and that'll be on the roof. It'll come inside to the new coil in our existing unit and produce air conditioning for us there. We are currently out for bids for that now, and if we get to carry forward the money we need to, we can do it. So is there any questions?
How old is the boiler that we're using right now? Actually, I should say, when was the building built? And it's probably the same, same date.
The boilers are probably 35, 40 years old.
Expected life on something like that?
With the proper preventive, preventive maintenance, we can extend our usage out of it now. It's undetermined right now how much longer we can use them, but when the heating season's over, what I want to do is I want to get someone in here to give me that, that number of how much longer we can have it.
At a minimum, we've made good use of the equipment that was original to the building.
We have. We have.
Mike and Chris, I assume that that was your question as well?
Yeah, I, I just, I'm just a little scared because I know we've been talking about this boiler for, it feels like forever. And so, and I understand the emergency with the, with the cooling system too, but, you know, God forbid they both go out and we're really going to be stuck. But I trust your guidance, and I appreciate that.
No other comments or questions? I'd entertain a motion on this one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Item number three, Decision Regarding a Claim Against the City by Extra Mile Plowing. Yes, if you come up, just state your name and your address.
I'm Aaron Rodman. I own Extra Mile Snow Plowing or Landscaping, it's listed on there. Address is 2955 South 18th Avenue. Received something in the mail, your insurance company is suggesting that you guys deny the claim solely because an operator in the truck doesn't remind, remember doing it, and I did not get a license plate number on the city plow truck, which would have involved me taking another large truck with a 10-foot plow and flying down Paradise Drive to get to an unsafe distance within that snowplow to get it. We filed an immediate police report, and there, I can answer any questions if you guys, if you guys have, have any. The wing on a, the wing on a city snowplow veered across the line, two lanes of traffic going the same direction, and, and hit the, hit the side view mirror of a brand-new F-550, about an $80,000 truck that we just purchased.
Any questions for Aaron?
Did anybody see anyone hit the vehicle? Was there any witness to it except just the results of the plow?
None other than the driver. I had assumed, we, so we called the police right away. I had assumed that the city probably had some sort of GPS tracking, either on the employees or, or the vehicles, which it turns out is not the case. So we thought that that would be able to show that, right on Paradise Drive at that time, the vehicle was there. Like I said, short of chasing after it, we're talking about a thousand bucks. You know, not, not life or death. I like the City of West Bend either way, not going anywhere. But, you know, the way we treat our customers is if we're pretty sure that it happened, then we just take care of it.
Yes, Craig.
I can just say that we get an item like this virtually every meeting, but I would say certainly every month. And this is, we really have to formally deny it for your insurance company and our insurance company to go duke it out. There really isn't anything that the council can do other than deny it so that, so that your insurance company can then, again, go after our insurance company. It sounds like a goofy process, but we've got something like this just about every month.
I called the Public Works Department, and they did not tell me that was the process. They said, "Come here, present it to the Finance Committee, and then in closed session, you guys would make a decision." Usually, you go with the insurance company's decision, but at that point, you guys would have the option of choosing to go with the insurance company's decision or, or choosing not to. I'm incorrect with that?
I'm not sure. You talked to the Public Works Department. I don't know that we've ever gone to a closed session for one of these. Again, if you go back and look at some meeting videos, we've got one of these virtually every, every meeting. So if we don't go with the insurance company's decision, I'm not sure what you're requesting, but if there was damage to your vehicle, our insurance company would be responsible for that.
Right.
I don't know what the alternative, what the alternative would be.
Your insurance company told me, I received a letter from your insurance company that was incorrect. It stated that it's a final decision, what they had made, and that my only course of action is to take legal action against the City of West Bend. And that seems ridiculous for me to take over a thousand bucks, which, I'll be honest here, I'd be willing to settle for something because something's better than nothing. It seems ridiculous for me to go file a small claim against the City of West Bend for something so small.
Well, the council sitting up, it really doesn't have the ability to go research and investigate whatever took place. That's why we have an insurance company?
Sure.
So this process of us saying, "Go back to the insurance company," would trigger your insurance company to go after our insurance company?
Right, which costs everyone a whole lot more than even, you know, 500 bucks, you know, so, but I mean, you guys, I understand.
Like I said, we've got a meeting, we've got one of these just about every meeting, and 500 bucks times 26 meetings a year, all of a sudden ends up to real dollars. That's, our process is to hire organizations to represent us. We don't have the, the means or the technical savvy, I don't think, to be going out and investigating potholes or damage to your vehicles.
Correct. That's why the police fill out a report, but understood. I figured I'd come here and give you guys an opportunity to say no to an actual person and, you know, other than just look at the sheet of paper and be like, "Ah, stamp."
Good. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming out, standing your case.
I'll make a motion to deny.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Chris?
Can I understand, can we look into our communication that we're having with our constituents, because something went awry here.
Yes, I've got a note on that, so.
Thank you.
That was with the Public Works Department, the head of the Public Works Department.
We will, we'll have a, have a conversation with them. No other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? That motion carries. Item number four, Resolution to Accept Donations to the Parks, Recs and Forestry Department. Presentation by Craig Kepner. Good evening, Craig.
Good evening again. Again, it's money, and it's good news. I'm going to skip ahead to, and I'll leave some of the big numbers for the end. First one is $370 donated by the B.C. Ziegler and Company for Recreation Youth Basketball Program. Next one was $1,250 donated by Killian Management Services for the 2018 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. Next one is $1,250 donated by Delta Defense LLC, also for the 2018 Dirty Ninja Mud Run for Kids. And the next two are big ones for the Riverwalk Project. $60,000 donated by the Ziegler Family Foundation Fund for the East Side Downtown Riverwalk Project, and $100,000 donated by the West Bend Economic Development Corporation, also for the East Side Downtown Riverwalk Project. So thanks to all those foundations, businesses for their support of the city.
I would agree. Thanks, Craig. It's good to see some of those donations. I know we talked about them being, some of them small, but for the Dirty Ninja Mud Run, any, any help definitely goes a long way. I'll take a motion on this.
Motion to accept. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign? And that motion carries. Thanks, Craig, and thanks to the individuals who donated the money. Thank you. Item number five, Funding Modification Request for Rolfs Avenue Extension. Max Marshall, you're back.
Yes, thank you. So this is the item that I mentioned at the Board of Public Works meeting regarding the Rolfs Avenue Extension. I won't go through the whole agreement with the county anymore, but basically, with the updated cost estimate, it looks like we would need to make up the difference of $330,000 in order to fund the construction project. So what we're proposing to do- So, what we're proposing to do is to use remaining funds in PMP accounts from the 2017 projects. Due to the positive bidding climate and the product, project completed under budget, we would be able to collect about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars from that. And then with the Eighth Avenue reconstruction bid coming below the projected amount, we would be able to add another hundred thousand dollars to fund the Rolfs Avenue project. And finally, in the, the agreement with the county, we had received funds for road purposes with the, taking over the jurisdiction on County Highway G now River Road, and we would complement this for an amount of about forty-two thousand six hundred dollars. And this is all based on our cost estimate for the Rolfs Avenue reconstruction. Hopefully, the bids come in lower than this estimate, and then we would not need to take as much money from the, the, the funding that we received from the county. So, if the finance committee approved, approved this shifting of the funds, we would be able to bid out the contract and have enough funds based on our cost estimate to bid it, to bid it out.
Thanks, Max. I think that's the one that I have the greatest concern over would be number three, taking some of those jurisdictional dollars out of there. Would there be an impact to our maintenance or capability of maintaining River Road by taking that out of the?
I, I don't believe so. My understanding is that this amount of money that was paid by the county to the city was originally for future needs for River Road. And my understanding is that if, if we use this amount of, some of it for other immediate road needs, we could still use future maybe PMP dollars when, when River Road needs some maintenance, we would complement whatever this amount is into the, the River Road funds.
Okay. So, you're just using basically present dollars versus future dollars?
Exactly.
Okay. Any comments or questions on this one?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Max.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item number six, purchase of a 2018 Ford F-550 four-by-two regular cab with Challenger model 2900 aerial tower. Presentation by Doug Newman, Director of Public Works. Good evening, Doug.
Good evening. Public Works is seeking approval to purchase a replacement aerial tower unit, otherwise known as our SIGN or Traffic Signal Truck. This unit will be replacing current unit 999, which is a 2000 GMC with aerial unit attachment. This unit is used on a daily basis for traffic signal maintenance and our SIGN replacement program. This replacement truck considered a specialty unit, which we only received one quote to build from Utility Sales and Service of Appleton. Capital project funds of one hundred and fifty-four thousand were budgeted in 2018 for this replacement unit. Unfortunately, the quote came in to build the unit under budget at a hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Because this quote meets our specifications, we are recommending to award the purchase to Utility Sales and Service of Appleton.
Thanks, Doug. And I think we've talked about this in the past, this is a pretty specific truck, has specific requirements, specific needs.
Correct. It's used daily. It's an important vehicle.
And is the typical lifespan, what about fifteen, sixteen years? Or did we kind of get lucky with the 2000?
Well, the vehicle goes through inspections because of the aerial lift. Unfortunately, because it is used daily, it's in the salt and the corrosion, so those are factors to consider when it's time to replace.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions on this one? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Being no further comments or questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by the same sign, that motion carries. And I'm going to save items seven, eight, and nine for a little bit later, and we're going to move to common council.
Thank you, Rich. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for February 5th, 2018 to order. Starting with item number one, approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of January 8th, 2018.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, or corrections? Hear none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting of January 22nd, 2018.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Under the consent agenda, items three through twenty-one, I'd entertain a motion on those.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions, comments, corrections on those items? Hear none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number twenty-two is a collective bargaining agreement committee appointment, and a quick presentation by Jay. If you would.
Sure. According to our rules, our council rules, you, you have a predetermined number of members for that committee, the mayor, the chair of the finance committee, the HR director, and one other appointee, and this appointment would fulfill that.
I would recommend that Jay is the one that's appointed as that open spot. If anyone else has an issue, we can certainly discuss it, but I would entertain a motion appointing Jay to that open position if we could.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations.
Item number twenty-three is a decision regarding a claim against the city by extra mile plowing.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number twenty-four, I'm advised that we don't need, tonight is just a discussion, I believe. So, jumping ahead to item number twenty-five is authorizing the correction of taxes for cornerstone counseling. Jay, are you leading us through that, or?
Jeff.
Good evening, Jeff.
This year, there were two personal property accounts that I would like to request they be removed from the roll, and we rescind the taxes, not requiring them to pay the taxes. The first one is cornerstone counseling. It has been brought to our attention that cornerstone counseling office is no longer located in the city of West Bend. Verification was made by our office on the matter. The tax billed was four hundred and forty dollars, thirty-eight cents. I recommend that be rescinded.
Good try getting it from them, if they're no longer in the city.
Yeah.
Why don't you go ahead and tell us about Sprint, and then we'll take separate action on both the items.
And Sprint also is a personal property account that was brought to our attention. There was a double assessment, had two different names, so that should also be rescinded and removed from the tax roll.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Take action on item number twenty-five regarding cornerstone counseling.
Motion to remove them from the tax roll.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number twenty-six is authorizing the correction of taxes for Sprint Universal Wireless.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number twenty-seven is AX-18-001, a petition referral for attachment to the city from the town of West Bend for approximately forty-three point two acres of land located on the southwest corner of Scenic Drive West and West, West Washington Street by the Debenhamsport Family Limited Partnership Number One. And we have a presentation tonight by business and development planner, James Ranky. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a referral from the council to our plant commission. Back in 2002, the city of West Bend and the town of West Bend entered into a boundary agreement. This area, for the request of attachment, is within boundary area A. Again, it was agreed upon area that we would, that the city and the town would expand our boundaries. This is for approximately forty-three acres located at the southwest corner of West Washington Street and Scenic Drive. This request is consistent with the boundary agreement, and staff would recommend that the request be made to our plant commission for their referral back for final action.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions for Jim? I would entertain a motion on the item and starting the process.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Congratulations so far to the Debenhamsport family, and thank you to Maurice Hana for choosing to do business in West Bend. We'll look forward to seeing you at a few more meetings and hope all goes well. Item number twenty-eight is a discussion and decision to fill Aldermanic District Two vacancy due to resignation. Before we get into that, I'd like to thank Prior Alderman Hutchins for his years of service to the city, almost a decade, eight and a half, almost nine, I believe. I served well. I think we'd all agree that Steve was a very passionate guy, represented District Two well, represented the city of West Bend well, and you never wondered what was on his mind. It was always, you left a meeting with a pretty clear understanding of where Steve stood, so we will, we will miss him. But if, Ian, could you give us our options on how to fill the position? I think we've got some good suggestions on how to do that.
So, there, under the statutes, there's two options to fill a vacant Aldermanic seat. The first is to move forward with an appointment process where the common council would select a successor who would then serve until the, basically the, the rest of the term, which would be until next April, the April 2019 election. The other option is based on the timing of the resignation or the vacancy. Because of the timing, because it's after December 1st, the, the, directing it to an election to fulfill, or to, to fill the seat would take, take it out to November. So, the, the election to fill the vacant seat would take place in November. If you choose to do an appointment process, typically what we do is public notice, ask for applications. We'll have either a special meeting prior to or just agenda item as part of a normal common council meeting to consider the applications. Common council will have an opportunity to interview the people. The applicants would have an opportunity to present to common council, and then you would nominate and select a successor to fill the seat. It would just take majority action, I believe, of the common council to elect the person. Any questions about processes?
I think we'd like to pick one. Jay and I talked, met with Rich this afternoon. Appointment process, given the length of time, I think is probably appropriate if this was a April election, or if even it was, you know, a shorter time slot, we could probably leave it open. We're comfortable with the appointment process, as long as you guys know what to do, how to, how to post it. We've got an application for aldermen, and proceed forward. What do you think a reasonable timeline is in the next forty-five days? Have aldermen in the seat?
Yeah, I think that's safe. If you posted it through the end of February, for example, had it open until then, and then took applications and interviews, questions of the prospective applicants in the first meeting in March, you could have them seated by, easily in forty-five days.
And one other question in the interim, I don't know if you had a chance to look it up yet, or if you know the answer, is our quorum now still sixty-six percent of eight seats, or is it?
I can't find anything that says it's not. So, I'm still looking to see, but I, as far as, as far as what I've seen, I believe it is the, of the full eight seats.
Still could be six out of seven aldermen, so don't get sick.
Correct.
Basically. Or if you do drag yourself here like Steve did tonight.
And, and I'll add on to what Jay said. Typically, you select the replacement alderperson, that person is then sworn in and immediately takes a seat. So, if you, if you had the interviews and selection at the first meeting in March, they would immediately be seated after that, and they would proceed through then the process.
Any questions? Anyone like a different alternative? Otherwise, we can make it official and have a motion on the decision to?
I'll make a motion to go with option one for?
I'll second.
Motion has been made and seconded for option one, which is the appointment process. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Anybody in District Two interested in being alderman? Stay tuned. Item number twenty-nine is appointment of the various committees and positions that former Alderman Hutchins held. I reached out to a couple of you, and a couple of you reached out to me. So, I've got a, four recommendations, and the remaining positions aren't as intense, so we can probably hold off with the, the rest of those if this appointment process is going to go that quickly that the, the new alderman may be interested in those. But so far, would recommend Alderman Hugaster to be the common council president, and if you agree, I would entertain a motion on that item.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. With that, I don't know if, is licensing board an official position, or does it say the council president? Okay. And Steve, you're on that one, too? Then we can quit making motions and seconding ourselves. Alderman Casson voiced interest in the plant commission, and I would recommend him.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And Alderman Jenkins, who can now quit begging me to be on the community TV committee, voiced interest immediately in being part of that group.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Thanks for stepping up, guys, and we'll fill the rest of those in the short, in the near future here. Item number thirty, report by Jay. Were you at the last downtown bid board meeting? Do you remember what went on?
Sure. I think the main order of business was to elect a president, and Mike Husar was once again elected president of the bid board. And then the other item that received a fair amount of discussion was continued plans regarding marketing and how to market the downtown. So, there's a, a small group that's been formed, and they've been working with the bid on, on making that ask as to how much of the bid board funds are utilized for enhanced or increased marketing efforts. And there's a bid board meeting tomorrow morning.
Thanks, Jay. Any questions for Jay? Item number thirty-one, report by Alderman Jenkins regarding the library board meeting.
Yes, the last library board meeting, I actually was unable to attend, but I did get an update on what all happened. It was a pretty short meeting. They're continuing the strategic plan for facilities, and they created a separate committee for that, and then they approved Amy Becker's 2018 goals.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Item thirty-two, report by Alderman, Alderman Chevalier regarding the tourism commission meeting.
Tourism commission meeting was a very interesting meeting. We got to learn a lot what the MOA chamber and also our own department does, so it was a very educational in that part, and pretty exciting to see what all three do for the Community for Tourism, and where that money goes.
And that's regarding the room tax dollars that are generated?
Correct.
Is that about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year?
Yes.
Give or take? And currently is split up between some dollars, I believe it's about a hundred thousand dollars goes to the West Bend Chamber.
Fifty to MOA.
And the balance stays internally for our own marketing efforts and some staff. And I think as we discussed here in the past a bit, state law has changed just within the last year, year and a half, really start, really watches those dollars. Apparently, there's some communities that were just keeping the full three hundred and fifty and weren't using it to, to market and, and increase tourism. We're not one of those communities, but at the same time, I think we've got to account for those dollars even more closely than we ever did. So, it's a committee that'll be important distributing those dollars going forward. Any other questions for Alderman Chevalier? Item thirty-three, report by Alderman Butchlike regarding the dear management committee meeting. How do we manage them?
We manage real well. Considering the deer hunt, we had just five hunters that were available to hunt, and we used lock loren. We learned an awful lot from the hunters. They were at the meeting. There were some downfalls about the hunt. One was very little time for them to actually get to scope out the park. Weather conditions were horrible. Two days we had rain, and after that, the temperature dropped about 15 to 20 below zero. But considering all those, out of the five day hunt, we had four days that the hunters actually spent out there. So they really gave their all to make an effort that, to make it a successful hunt, even though we didn't... They saw the deer. The deer numbers were there. It just was, they didn't have enough time to get the best locations of them. And always, the biggest drawback was there wasn't any cover for them. Everything was pretty much, all the leaves and vegetation was gone. So one of the hunters said the deer would look up and spot them right away. The only hunter that did get three deer, he actually had a 25-foot deer stand, which he says they weren't able to see. But there were a couple of comments, which I know the public is, has a huge concern about safety. And what really impressed me was, out of the five hunters, there were only three shots taken. Three shots, three killed deer. The remaining hunters did not fire an arrow. There were no arrows fired. There was one hunter that specified, there was a deer that was about 20 yards away from him. He didn't have a very good shot at him, and he disappeared into the bushes. And he said he felt he was unsafe for him to take the shot, and he left the deer go. And that was a very encouraging comment, and the hunters we had were especially very safety minded. So I was very impressed with it, and I think our hunt was successful in that aspect. Now that we move forward, we have some, some background, what we want to do to move forward. And we'll be coming back later at the council for directions and which way the council wants to go. So at this point, right now, statistically, we didn't have the numbers there, but overall, we learned an awful lot from it.
Thanks, John. Thanks to the committee as well. I know on a per hour of investment per deer, it was pretty many hours per deer, but the groundwork was certainly laid. I think this community, regardless of what side of the topic you're on, has got to recognize that it really was openly communicated very well to the public. And again, as you mentioned, safe. So hopefully, we'll have some success in 2018, and look forward to the committee's, committee's comments when you're ready. Any other questions for John? Finally, item number 34, Report by Alderman Chevalier Again Regarding the Park, Rec, and Forestry Commission Meeting.
Yes, we went through many different items, especially what's coming up in the coming year. Of course, with the Emerald Ash Bore removal and replacement of trees. There's a long ways to go, but they're making great footsteps ahead. Regner Park, they're going to be putting in a new fish deck and a cafe area at the pond with a shade structure. Villa Park, a new shelter is going in. Lock loren, the barn, they're going to need electrical updates on that. Regner, tennis courts resurfacing and striping for pickleball. Lock loren, a new shelter, education space shelter. And the dog park, there's going to be a new shelter being placed up on top of the hill.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions for Mike? Being no further business before the Common Council, I adjourn. I have one announcement before we reconvene the Finance Committee. And that's regarding positions on various city committees, commissions, boards, lots of volunteer opportunities. If you go on the city's website, you can really easily find the application for those. We take applications up through March 1st. Appointments are made right after the April election, when we know exactly who the council's going to be. I already know that there's some vacancies on a few of those committees coming up for the balance of this year. So we welcome some new people, or welcome some experienced people. Jump online, fill out the application, and send it into the city. We'll be happy to review it. Anybody else have any announcements? And I'll turn it back over to Rich.
Thanks, Craig. Reconvene the Finance Committee. We have two items left in the agenda, items number seven and eight. Both entertaining a motion to go into closed session. Item number seven, Entertaining Motion to Adjourn into Closed Session Pursuant to State Statutes, Section 19.85, Section 1 Sub G, Conferring with Legal Counsel for the Governmental Body Who is Rendering Oral or Written Advice Concerning Strategy to Be Adopted by the Body With Respect to Litigation in Which It Is or Likely to Become Involved. This is the Menards Litigation Update. Stephanie, will you take a roll call vote on this?
Motion.
So moved.
I'm sorry, motion for...
Second.
Motion second. Stephanie, will you take a roll call vote?
Alderman Butchlich.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hoogaster.
Aye.
Alderman Kist.
Aye.
We're in closed session.
Okay, and then item number eight, Entertaining Motion to Adjourn into Closed Session Pursuant to State Statutes, Section 19.85, Section 1 Sub G, Deliberating or Negotiating the Purchase of Public Properties, The Investing of Public Funds, or Conducting Other Specified Public Business Whenever Competitive or Bargaining Reasons Require a Closed Session. And this is Tax Incremental District Number 13 Agreement Discussion. And I will entertain a motion on this one.
A motion to move into closed session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Stephanie, will you take a roll call vote?
Alderman Butchlich.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Jenkins.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hoogaster.
Aye.
Alderman Kist.
Aye.
We're in closed session.
Excellent. And we will not be returning from closed session, so I bid everybody a good night. Thank you.